Are you ready?
Yes.
All right, welcome to the Newton Town Council meeting of August 11th, 2025. Please stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we roll call please? Mr. Kuss.
Here.
Mr. Dixon.
Here.
Mrs. Diglio.
Here.
Mrs. Teetz.
Here.
Mayor LaFois.
Here.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January 3rd, 2025. All right, you have received the minutes for July 14th, 2025, our regular meeting. Are there any changes or additions, deletions?
None.
All right, seeing no others, can I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 14th, 2025 for a summary.
And I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio and a second by Councilwoman Teetz. Roll call, please. Mr. Kuss.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. Teetz.
Yes.
Mayor LaFois. Yes. At this point, we will open the meeting to the public. The town council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic to help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard. Speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone and please limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. The council may choose to comment after the entire public portion has concluded. Anyone in person? All right, seeing none, Mr. Russo, do we have anybody online?
Do, but I don't see any raised hands.
All right, we will close that first open portion and we'll move on to council and manager comments. Mr. Russo?
Just one item that Mr. Fariel discussed, the note sale that's coming up. I'm afraid I didn't just mention.
So tomorrow, we have a bond anticipation note sale. It's for $4,200,000. It's basically to fund all the projects that have been accumulating because the projects have been going, we've been paying out the cash, but we have no money. So doing a bond anticipation note is a short-term note. It's for one year. We have the opening at 11 o'clock tomorrow. I was looking at some, some other sales, so I'm assuming based upon the other sales, we should hopefully get in the high twos, low threes as a percent, which is not that bad at all right now. And once we close on that, the cash goes back in, I pay back everybody for the, for the money that we've been paying out that I had to use cash from, from other funds.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Ferry? Mr. Russo, anything else?
No, thank you.
All right. Councilman Kuss?
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilwoman Diglio?
I have nothing at this time.
Councilwoman Teetz?
I'd just like to thank the Kimberly and the Newton Police and DPW, Fire Department, First Aid Squad, all the sponsors of National Night Out. I know we compete every year with the fair that same week, but you know, it was a good event and you know, hopefully it just continues to grow each year. And I'd just like to mention on this Friday night, and I have the details and I'll share with the council later, but the Battle of the Badges is a charity softball game that will be held at Skylands. And it's worth attending. I will share it. Begins at 3:30. That's.
3:30 PM. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Dixon?
Yes, a couple items. July 22nd, I attended the Human Services Advisory Council Homeless Coordination Subcommittee Meeting. Mr. Russo and Chief DeAnabel were also in attendance. At the meeting, the police chief did ask about contacts for services and daytime versus nighttime because you know, a lot of these services are nine to five type deal, so they run into the problem of what to do after hours. And they were going to work to streamline a process and simplify it for the PD. They were going to work with the chief on that. Also, on July 22nd, myself, the mayor and Dr. Picarello had a meeting at the community college with Dr. Homer. I really received some updates on some of the new programs and projects that they have going on at the college and talked about ways that we can continue to partner together. On July 30th, I attended a Zoom on the executive order on homelessness in New Jersey. The conversation kind of just revolved around the executive order and how it might affect some services in New Jersey. And then lastly, on August 7th, we had a meeting with Barn Light Studios and the team brings a wealth of knowledge in regards to the film and entertainment industry. They were impressed with the list that the town had put together of the locations and look forward to seeing what can come of a potential partnership with them. So that is all.
It's great, thank you for those updates. I just wanted to add a couple of things as well. I feel like since our last meeting, we've had both of our concerts in the park and movies in the park. The concert this past weekend, about, well, about 350, 375 people, so much energy. Tom, the band was fantastic and people came up, they were, people came up to me from Green, Hampton, Andover, Andover Borough. Everybody was asking for them to come back next year already, high energy, costume changes. They played longer than we'd even contracted them to play. It was really great. And so that was August 9th, and then we had our other one, August 12th. That was the eighties concert, also well-attended, about 450 people. I think a lot of people have commented that the venue up at the college is fantastic for the concerts and for the movies. The college was accommodating with the additional accessible and handicapped spaces this time that they let us use. It was great. We have one more movie coming up on August 22nd. And I just wanted to point out, if you haven't seen these around town, most of the businesses have these leaflets, pamphlets, which are a great resource and reference for all of the events coming in town. So a great job to Kimberly. It's great to see so many Newton residents there and DPW is always there. I just want to recognize them as well. So just some great summer free activities for our residents and surrounding towns and they've been really well received. Thank you, Michelle, for mentioning National Night Out. It was a, it was a beautiful weather night though, up there as well. And not only were we competing with the fair, but like it's a national event, right? So so many towns throughout the county and surrounding areas hold their events as well. But I did talk to a couple of families and the kids loved running around and then specifically want to shout out our helicopter, our rescue helicopter that was there that came and landed and allowed the kids to climb around in the helicopter and put on a little show for them. The band was good and I think everybody had a good time. Thanks to all the staff members, Kat, I know you coordinated, who worked at the Newton Table. And you really could have had dinner there between all the food that was given out from all the vendors, you could have just kind of gone, the fire department was doing hot dogs and lots of desserts and things like that. So good night. Thanks Deputy Mayor for mentioning the Barn Light Studio meeting. So interesting, right? They've been, one of the co-founders of Barn Light Studios is from the area, from Sussex County, and she and her partner went out to LA and did all the big things and have a lot of contacts. They are one of the exclusive scouts and production companies for Elijah Woods Entertainment Company. And so they're looking to establish their headquarters here in Sussex County. Many people know that over the last couple of years, the state has spent a lot of time and resources becoming film-ready. And the town of Newton, I know Sparta, I'm not sure, I think might be the only two in Sussex County, but Kat and Tom spent a lot, a lot of time over the last 18 or so months to become, for Newton to become film-ready. It has an inventory of about 75 different properties, location sites. And so it'll be exciting to see what happens over the next coming months. And actually, we have a resolution on tonight because the state came back with some additional changes to our film-ready ordinance, but we have that on tonight. So good, good connection there and the town's been really responsive in helping out this company, so it's great. July 15th, ice cream with a cop was up at Newton Pool. I don't know how many, Raul, do you know how many ice cream sandwiches, like cases, cases of ice cream sandwiches you guys gave out? A lot, yes. Raul kept going back and forth to the freezer. Every time I turned around, he was bringing out another box. I think there were a few hundred people there that I have, from what I understand, that we took pictures with and handed out ice cream to. And I think there were a few conversations, although Raul was the star of handing out the ice cream. Officer Bellis, our school resource officer, was the one that the kids really gathered around to talk to, to find out how their summer was going. So thank you to the department for being there and handing that out. Townwide Garage Sale was really a success. We had a record number, at least in recent history, about 90 properties that participated in the townwide garage sale. And on that day, on those three days, really, I heard from people that were coming from all over the county and outside the county, looking for their next treasure from, from Newton households. So thank you to everybody that participated in the clerk's office, certainly for organizing all that, getting the map out, putting on the website. I know we had them printed in the police department on town, so it was great. On July 28th, the Newton Fire Department had a very successful golf outing. A few of us were able to attend the luncheon. It is one of their biggest fundraisers of the year, and from what I understand from the chiefs, they netted and raised over $10,000. So very successful, very hot day on July 28th, but it was a good event and well-attended. On July 30th, Tom and I attended the Newton Rotary Weekly Meeting, and it was a good opportunity for us to update the Rotary on everything that's going on in the town. And I think the update was really, really well-received. Got some feedback and some emails afterwards and saw some of the committee members there who really, even though they're involved in the town of Newton, really had no idea of all the projects that we were working on and things to come. So we've talked a little bit about, Deputy Mayor and I and Tom talked a little bit about perhaps the town joining the Rotary and then rotating who attends based on who their speakers are. So we could have our animal control officer attend to speak, or if they are having someone from the county to talk about the rail trail, we might have someone in DPW attend. Or so we'll kind of thinking about being on a rotation of the town being speakers and updating more specifically on projects or initiatives that are going on town, but then also different people within the organization attending the meetings to hear about what the Newton Rotary has going on. So I did tell them that I would talk about three things that they have coming up, three events. On September 11th, they have a dine to donate event at Friendly's. So if you're looking for dinner on the September 11th, go to Friendly's and mention the Newton Rotary. On September 13th, they have a farm-to-table dinner fundraiser to support the homelessness project, and this is a dinner and wine tasting with Georges, and it's going to be at the barn up at the Currents Farm, the Currents property. So I have a couple flyers if people are interested in that. And then on September 24th, they're very busy in September, they have their annual golf outing at the Newton Country Club. So if anybody's looking for more information, probably on their website or their social media, or we can connect you with the leadership there. And then on August 4th, the Newton Rotary came to our animal control building to do the official, I know they came to a council meeting, but to do the official plaque donation for the cat condo that they purchased and donated to the town of Newton. We got to see the cat condo, and because it was so nice, we actually were able to purchase another one or two. And just want to recognize, I got to meet the new ACO officer and Chief DeAnabel was very complimentary of her and said that in the short tenure that she's been here, she's been able to get adopted, the vast majority of the animals. Now, this was as of August 4th, so I'm not sure what's happened since then, but the vast majority of the animals that needed to get adopted and placed, either permanent adoption or foster adoption, which was great. And then finally, I just want to recognize our very own Miss Newton Danielle Penny, who took first runner-up, second place at the Queen of the Fair contest. And I know Councilwoman Teetz, you were very impressed with her when she came to
Yeah, during the, during the Miss Newton contest, right?
Tap wrote a great article about all of the contestants, but people may not know that she was Little Miss Newton when she was younger and now wonderfully representing the town of Newton as Miss Newton, very well-spoken, she's a great young lady, always smiling, happy to be anywhere that she needs to be for the town of Newton, attended the first concert, right? Michelle, we saw her there at the eighties concert with Little Miss and Little Mr. Newton. So congratulations to Danielle Penny and thank you for representing Newton so well. I think that's all I have for tonight. All right, so we will move on to unfinished business. We have Mr. Ferry back up.
Thank you, Mayor. So I reached out after we had this conversation with Enterprise. You asked for us to do some surveys. So we sent out, I got a list of 10, 10 other municipalities, only three responded. I reached out to Enterprise and I told them, maybe you ought to reach out to the other ones, have them respond, but I haven't heard, I haven't gotten anything since. While we were doing that, after the last meeting, I reached out to another company, D and M. They're a smaller company, they're based out of Texas, though. You'll never see them here, but they're smaller. They, they're a little cheaper. I don't know if they're going to have any bigger savings. They're going to be, and I don't know if they're going to even be any competitive, any more competitive with being able to, you know, look at our stuff and update. I think they're basically, all these companies are almost do everything pretty much the same. Savings won't be that much, but I reached out to them. I sent them a bunch of information, so I haven't received anything back from them yet to report on. I reached out to another company, Element Fleet, and they said they basically handle bigger volume towns, Jersey City, you know, the bigger ones. And they said they probably wouldn't be able to save or show a savings at all for us. So I'm waiting for D and M and I'm waiting for hopefully some more responses, but the responses that we did get back were very positive. I think one of them was actually a police chief, and he was really happy with his fleet and, and everything was pretty positive. So we keep on digging. We don't have to really get this all wrapped up till the end of the year, if we decide, if you decide to do it. This way, if you do, we have to figure out, not figure out, but we have to tweak the budget, reduce, you know, fuel, maintenance, and then put in the lease payments once we get started. Now, we'd only be for 26.
So what's your suggestion at this point?
Wait, I want to hear back from D and M. They were very nice. I mean, they spent about an hour with me. And they would give us the same thing. One person would review everything on a yearly basis. And they have companies, they deal with service, service, service shops that if something broke, you take it to them. It's no cost because it's all under the lease payment. The only thing they don't cover, and pretty much all of them, they don't cover, is wear and tear stuff, tires, brakes, oil. And our guys can easily do that stuff. And that's where, you know, the lifts and all that other stuff do come in, even for non-vehicle stuff for some of the bigger tractors and stuff, we still use that lift for. So hopefully by next meeting, I'll have a response from D and M.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Ferry?
I just think it was good, like if we do get some more responses, only like the ones that did, you know, were very positive, but it's been like one or two years, you know, like is there anybody with longer history or?
Yeah, we'll see. And by the way, D and M, they didn't have anybody in New Jersey. They couldn't think of one. They're Texas, they're bigger, they, they, you know, they're down south, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll see what they come up with, but yeah, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to call up Enterprise again, or give him a call again and see if he can get any more responses.
We'll revisit later in the fall when we have more information.
Councilman Kuss, did you have any questions for Mr. Ferry?
I do not. I appreciate the work so far, Mr. Ferry. You're doing a great job to keep it up.
Sure.
Okay, moving on to additional unfinished business, Resolution 178-2025. It's a resolution to appoint members to various boards and commissions. Do I have a motion? All right, seeing none?
The absence of a motion, the resolution dies.
All right, moving on to Resolution 179-2025. This is also an appointment to the planning board. Do I have a, carried from the 623 meeting? Do I have a motion? All right, seeing none, Resolution 178 and 179 both die. And we'll move on to discussion. We have our town planner, Jessica Caldwell, here, who is going to talk about draft ordinance for three-dimensional signage.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Our office provided a draft ordinance for three-dimensional signs. So these are signs, like for Kurt and Cleaver, there was a, it's kind of a cheese, I'm sure you've all seen it with the Cleaver. And also at Davey's Cookies had a big coffee mug. So I think it's becoming more of a trend to have these types of signs. We weren't unsupportive of them, but there was some feedback from various entities within the town and, and just people who saw the signs that felt like we should have, you know, a methodology for reviewing them to make sure that they are proper size and, and are safe for the public. So what this does is it defines what a three-dimensional sign is and then puts in standards for those signs. We have two types. One would be like the Kurt and Cleaver type of sign where it's, it's similar to a blade sign. It's projecting out from the front of the building, like a wall-mounted, three-dimensional sign. Those signs we permitted in the T6 district, which is just really the, you know, Spring Street and downtown area. And then we also have a freestanding or ground-mounted type of sign, which would be something that would be like the coffee mug that would be placed in front of a building. And that obviously could not be on Spring Street, but could be in other areas. We located those potentially in the T4 and T5, and then in the special districts. So we provided sign areas. So the three-dimensional wall-mounted sign would be a maximum of 36 square feet. You can see if you have the ordinance at the bottom of page two, we have a methodology for measuring the sign. It's on three sides, creating a box, and then you add those three sides together. So the 36 square feet would be a maximum of 12 square feet on each side, four feet by three feet. For the three-dimensional signs, it would be freestanding type of signs, we put a maximum of 72 square feet, which there would be a single face of 24 square feet, so it would be six by four. So it'd be essentially be six feet tall by four feet wide. And then we have that sign area measurement, and that's essentially it. So it gives us a way to measure the signs. It provides where they would be located and then maximum size for, also I should mention in the T6, you would only be allowed one per building, per street frontage. And then for outside of the T6, we would have one per business per street frontage. So the idea is that we don't want too many of them, you know, start looking cluttered, so.
Too many per business?
Right, one per building under the T6. We could change that to one per business if you wanted, but there was some concern it might just start getting too cluttered, too many of them perhaps. So, you know, I think there, this could be a good start. You can always go back and, and change that, you know, sometimes kind of put the toe in the water and see how it goes. And then, I don't know, I think they're a little bit expensive, so you may not see a lot of them right off the bat, but it does seem to be more of a trend. And I think they're interesting and fun and would add, have added at least the two that we have, positive things for the town and some interest and people might, you know, with Instagram and whatnot, I think people enjoy seeing these kinds of things.
The clock too.
The clock has been there for a while, obviously historic, and that, you know, is an example of something that's more of a three-dimensional type of feature in the downtown.
So because you just used that terminology, let me ask you about that. What's the difference between a feature and a sign? Except for the obvious, is it a, the wording?
Yeah, so it's, that's why we have the definition, because it does need to indicate a business. So there's like artwork and signs, and we sort of went back and forth with the sign on some of these things. Is it artwork? Is it a, is it a, you know, piece of public art or is it a sign? So it would need to indicate the business, but it wouldn't necessarily need to have wording on it. It could just be the form, but indicating the business at the property that it's at. So a clock wouldn't necessarily, but if, if you, if you're putting something about the business there, it would become a sign.
So the, in the example of the ice cream cone that you have at the bottom, right? Presumably it doesn't have any wording unless it's on the other side, so that would be a sign, even though it doesn't have wording?
Correct.
As opposed to a feature or a piece of art or something like that?
Yeah, because some of the ones that we've had already, we sort of had to deem as artwork because, you know, if they don't have the name on it, or, you know, we didn't have a definition for it, you know? You end up sort of in this gray area, so it's trying to make it clear, if someone puts something like this in front of their business, it becomes a sign and these are, these are the regulations for that sign. So that's also helpful for that, if someone wants to do it, and then they can just submit a, you know, a zoning permit to get them rather than have issues of enforcement and things like that.
And the measurements that we have in here, how do they compare to the three existing? If we include the clock that we have now, are they about, I'm just, sometimes not, I'm a visual person in justice, so I'm not, yeah.
The clock are, but I think they would all fall within this. We did use the Kurt and Cleaver one as, as, you know, a kind of an example of what, about the maximum size we would want to see. Because I think if you start getting too much bigger, it starts to be out of scale, especially in downtown situation, you know, where it's kind of coming out over the sidewalk. We also had, I should mention, there's limitations about how much it can go out over a sidewalk. It's 48 inches, and then it can't be going out over the road because it just didn't feel like that would be a safe situation. So as long as it's over the sidewalk and eight feet above the ground, it would be tall enough to not, you know, interfere with pedestrians, but if you have, you can have trucks and things that are higher than eight feet, so we don't want it projecting over the actual roadway. So if there is a situation where the sidewalk wasn't less than 48 inches away from the building, it wouldn't be able to project that far out. So just some safety features, you know, as well for that. And then any freestanding, ground-mounted would need to be five feet from any property line. We already have language in the ordinance about not blocking site distance and things like that, you know, can't be within the site triangle if you're trying to pull out from a, you know, a business and have it looking both ways. You have to be clear so you can see down the street.
So what happens in the event that there's more than one business in one building? It's a multi-business building?
So in case the way we have it, it wouldn't be permitted. What we could do, one per business, it per street frontage. So let's say like the same building that Kurt and Cleaver's in has frontage on Spring Street, they could have another one on the Spring Street frontage because that one is on the Moran Street frontage. frontage, so it's one per building per street frontage currently. There aren't, I would say, too many multi-tenant buildings on Spring Street, most of them are.
Your buildings? Street frontage, but if all six of your tenants wanted to put something out.
Kind of what you think of, right? If, if all six of the tenants in my building wanted to have a three-D sign, that could be a little crazy, right? Could have a camera and, I don't know, but it would be, uh. It's one of the things we were talking about when we were drafting it, was what if there were just way too many?
Right.
You know, and you look down the street and it looks like this crazy cluttery, too much. You know, so that was one method for trying to, to, um, confront that, and I guess if, you know, you can always get variances, so I guess if something came up where made absolute sense, they could come in and seek a variance from that.
Yeah, and we have a question from Councilman Kuss.
Okay.
So maybe, just a point of inquiry, um, you know, they're pre-existing, but would, um, under the, the current definitions or the, the new proposed definition, would a sign similar to that of either the Plaza Restaurant or the Theater Marquee, uh, fit into this?
This would be too big. This would be too big. Both of them would, would be oversized for that, especially the Plaza. Yeah.
Internally illuminated, uh, awning conversation. Name versus sign versus.
They are both. Specifically grandfathered into the ordinance, but they would not.
Right. My only potential thought there would be if someone were to come along and, um, you know, use the pre-existence of those two items as an argument to obtain a variance. The rest of the council was, was, um, you know, of any interest to, to maybe explore that. Not, not to say I am, just, just to have the conversation, since those two do exist in close proximity to each other on the street.
Right. Yeah, and I mean, they certainly could, and they certainly could do that now. I'm not sure how we would combat that. I guess in terms of size, you know, the whole idea is to try to create a scale that goes with you know, the, the area and the historic nature of, of the town, so.
One, um, point to that, the fact about marquees. Marquees are actually under the building codes. They are a building element, so they're not construed as signs. So there is a difference.
JP, that's, uh, Mr. Vudo.
Thank you.
So at least for the, I guess for the theater, we would, wouldn't consider that a three-dimensional sign.
Any other questions or comments?
I mean, I think we need to help the businesses, you know, how we can, and you know, sometimes when you're just driving down Spring Street, sometimes it's hard to notice the businesses that are there that only have signs on the frontage, front side of the building, so.
Right.
You know, but there's got to be a happy medium, right, for it's not Yeah, everyone has a three-dimensional sign, but, you know, you've seen some, you know, where the sign they're kind of aligned, they protrude from the building. You know, and are all kind of the same size and font and whatever, but.
I mean, back in the eighteen hundreds, that's how businesses identify themselves, right? I'm saying, just based on pictures and people, you know. Literacy rates were different then, and that's how people knew.
I think it is kind of a historic thing, I, and I, I'm reading into a little, but I think it's, not everybody could read, so. You know, and so it's kind of neat in a way that it goes back to the historic nature of how signs were created, and it is, you know, primarily, we've been looking at the historic district, but realize it could pop up in other locations in town.
Okay, so we're good with, uh, a future introduction as is? Any changes that anybody wants to see made?
Do an introduction and refer on planning board.
Yes, yes.
You want to lit up ice cream cone?
Well, just, are we putting any limits on that, or?
It's a good, excellent question. Can they be internally illuminated?
We have, um, limitations on internal illumination, there's it is currently silent on that, so we should add something. I would think not, but I would take your feedback on that.
Planning board to weigh in, or do you want us to add that now? The prohibition on illumination? Up to you.
We do permit signs over eight square feet to be internally illuminated if they go to the planning board for approval. You could say something similar, where they could be internally illuminated if they go to planning board, it just gives that extra review to make sure it's not garish and These, but yeah, if you can imagine the cheese being lit up, it might be too much, I don't know. Um, maybe they could do it in a, in a way that was nice, and that's kind of where it gets down to is. Yeah, a little bit, but, you know, it kind of just gives that extra step, just to make sure that if someone's proposing something that's large and illuminated, that the board has the ability to weigh in on it, you know.
They don't go to the board if it's not illuminated, if they want, then they're gonna pay for it and go to the board, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and then they're gonna, yeah.
I mean, there's a difference between putting like a gooseneck light over it and lighting it versus it like being neon and.
That they can do without the gooseneck lighting, they can light exterior lid as, as permitted for all of our signs. But it's the internal illumination that we, we have a little higher standard for, yeah.
Yeah, I would say as long as it's consistent with what we do for other internally illuminated.
Okay, we'll just clarify that, then, that's a good point.
We'll drop the nordeans once we get the clarification.
Any other language questions or suggestions? See any no? JP, no?
Nope, all good.
Okay. All right, thanks, Jess. All right, we're gonna move on to, uh, ordinances. Uh, we have an introduction of ordinance twenty-two-five dash eighteen. This is an ordinance by the mayor and town council, amending the code of the town of Newton. To repeal chapter one oh-five filming, to adopt a new chapter one oh-five filming, and to repeal chapter one hundred entitled fees and costs, namely section one hundred dash eight dash filming, chapter one oh-five, to adopt a new chapter, one hundred entitled fees and costs, namely section one hundred at eight, dash eight, filming, chapter one oh-five. This is what I was referring to earlier, where the, we submitted our, our ordinance, and the state asked for some modifications, and so we have to repeal the former and introduce a new one. Do I have a motion to introduce?
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-two-five dash eighteen.
Second? Okay, I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Dixon and a second by Councilwoman Diglio. Roll call, please. Mr. Kuss?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes.
The public hearing on ordinance twenty-two-five dash eighteen will be held on Wednesday, September tenth, uh, twenty-two-five, at about seven o'clock. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the town council, and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Tom, can you review the resolutions, please?
Sure, we have resolutions rejecting the bid for the wastewater plant generator and the award of that contract. We have a resolution for restated deed of easement for Cobbler's Loft and Sparta condo association. Appointment of suburban as the backup water project engineers, that helps us get grants and, you know, manage projects, and then bills and vouchers is two oh-five, and then we have one resolution under executive for attorney-client privilege redevelopment later.
Yes, okay, any, uh, resolutions that have to be pulled or, uh, further discussed? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, I have a motion by Councilwoman Teets and a second by Councilwoman Diglio. Roll call, please. Mr. Kuss?
Stating on check number one three six seven five, yes, otherwise.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes.
All right, we'll have our second, uh, open to the public session. Seeing none in person, council chambers, do we have any on Zoom, Tom?
No raised hands.
All right, seeing none, we'll close that portion. Um, additional council manager comments, Mr. Russo?
Yes, we are closing at three P M. on Friday, August twenty-ninth. We are closed for Labor Day. We here before you know it. Um, the excitement continues with Tom Talk Wednesday, September third. Minus the video, we'll be doing, uh, weekly visits to town manager and some staff members, three P M. at Penny Rose Coffee Company, so that's every Wednesday starting September third, so have coffee with your favorite town manager. Um, next item, the town is hosting the business meet and greet at the Newton Pool. That's five P M. Same day, Wednesday, September third. That's open to business owners and the public to come and show appreciation for the business community, so that's the third at five P M. Food from Crave, and there will be music as well. And I'm starting year eighteen next week as town manager, and I just want to say thank you to the council and previous councils for allowing me the opportunity to do what I love and serve as the longest-serving manager in the, in the town, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Congratulations, Tom. Uh, Councilwoman Teets?
Uh, nothing further, thank you.
Councilman Kuss?
I think it's the moment.
Councilwoman Diglio? Dr. Mayor Dixon? All right, um, just a really quick on, uh, the thirteenth, so Wednesday. Um, in conjunction with Legislative District twenty-four, the town in this room is hosting a property tax relief session. Uh, we were approached by, um, Assemblyman in Ganymore's office, um, and, uh, this is for our seniors to come. There's a consolidated application for the state this year for some, uh, it used to be like the anchor was a different application, property relief, another application, now the states combine them, so, um, there will be people here with their laptops and their computers, uh, helping anybody from the legislative district. Certainly our Newton seniors and anyone else who wants to file the, that paperwork, so that's going to be here at Town Hall on the thirteenth, Tom, the time.
Start time.
I think it's nine A M.
Is it nine A M? Oh, here it is, um. Yes, uh, August thirteenth, nine A M. in Town Hall. Um, so that will be here. Uh, we do have a planning board meeting this month. Um, so Deputy Mayor and I will give you an update, that's the twentieth, that's next week. And then one thing, I know, uh, Deputy Mayor Dixon mentioned the meeting with Sussis County Community College, um. We, their whole leadership team was at the meeting, um, as well as members of the foundation, and we got to tour some of the new, I'll call them maker spaces, um, some of the new spaces to include like their photonics and their three-D print printing labs and their exercise science programs, and there are just some really, really great state-of-the-art um, features on the campus, um. It's amazing, they, they're anticipating, uh, enrollment for the fall to be up six percent, which is five percent above the state average for community college enrollments. Uh, they have about thirty-five hundred students already enrolled. Seventy-five programs plus over twenty certificate programs. Um, so very veteran-friendly, uh, adult ed-friendly, if you want to go back and get another certificate or learn another skill or, uh, start a degree if you don't have one, um, but we got to tour the Optics Technology Center, um. The, uh, they have art galleries, this really cool nursing simulation lab. Uh, my gosh, when we walked in and it was room, I thought, it was dark, partially dark, I thought there were six bodies in that room, that's how um, lifelike they were, uh, the Medical Arts Center, um, the Defense Tactics Space, um. Bunch of athletic updates, there's, um, there's going to be additional medical labs, uh, that are being installed to create a dental assistance program, a radiology program. Um, so there's a lot going up, going on up at the, at the college, and we're really proud of the work that they're doing there, and Dr. Homer, um, I think is doing a fantastic job already in his tenure, um. And it's just really exciting, the, the new things that are being added on, so, um, diesel trades, Kubota training, under their H V A C. Training, they're partnering with Train and doing, um, building construction trades. Um, just really good, exciting stuff, uh, for our students. Those are the only other things I forgot. All right, so we do have an executive session this evening, this is Resolution two oh-six dash twenty-two-five, and this is a resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Act, N J S A ten colon four dash twelve, under attorney-client, client privilege, under the, uh, discussion of redevelopment. Do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to enter executive session two zero six twenty-two-five.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Teets and a second by Deputy Mayor Dixon at seven fifty-five P M. to go into executive session. Mr. Murphy? All in favor, yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we anticipate? Do we anticipate? No, thank you.
Okay. Uh, I think that's it.
No public action after. Do we anticipate?
All right, JP, we'll give you a call.